Thank you. So according to my chronometer, it's three minutes after three o'clock on Thursday, April 27, 2023, and I'm officially calling the policy committee meeting to order. We have a quorum. Oh, one member, Claudia Hammond, has yet to arrive, but we are expecting her shortly. So in attendance are the other committee members, Vice Chair Gordon Heinrichs and committee members Ted Key. Welcome back, Jim Townsend.
Thank you.
Due to certain circumstances, he's been absent for the past three months, and we are certainly glad to have him back to have his very well thought out participation. And we also have former Chair of this committee as well as Board President, Don Howell. Thank you, Don. And also in the audience is Haley Dodson, who has so many titles that I don't recall which one I should use. I think it's HR and IT, right? And Board Secretary, that's right. And our, how can I say it? I don't know quite how to describe the qualities of our new General Manager. So let's say, welcome aboard, General Manager Matt McElhaney. It's so good to see you, buddy.
Thank you. Appreciate being.
So let's go ahead and get things in order here. So like I say, we have a quorum. We will be having, I would say, an ad hoc subcommittee report on item 3A, if I'm not mistaken. So we'll leave it with that. With regard to the chairperson's report, I just kind of gave my report in introducing our new General Manager, Mr. McElhaney. And I personally am so grateful that he has become part of this district. And I just want to make the comment that the service that he's going to provide, not just to the CCSD, but to the members of this community, is going to create a totally different way of being in the community of Cambridge. That's my humble opinion. Do any committee members have anything that they would wish to communicate to other committee members and to folks out there in the public land? No? Okay. Well, I just wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow, not tomorrow, but Saturday and Sunday, right here in this very building, is going to be the Wildflower Show, the FFRP, Fiscalini Ranch, the Ranch Reserve Wildflower Show, which will be in its 15 year, 15th year. We have not had, I say we, because I've been involved with FFRP for quite a while. We haven't had a wildflower show for three years due to COVID. And it's a spectacular exhibit of all of the wildflowers that are out there from the Monterey border, out over 46 and down to Los Osos. So it's always a spectacular amount of items that have been collected by about 16 people. And the number of folks that put together this event are all very committed, many of them, all very intelligent with regard to wildflowers, especially Doc, I can't think of Doc Miller. So please try and make it if you can. It's a $5 donation, but it's an unbelievable event. One of the best wildflower shows in the entire state of California. So there we are.
Come, come Saturday early.
Yeah, well.
Around there looking a little.
That's exactly right. It's noon, it's noon to five on Saturday, 10 to four on Sunday. I would recommend that most people try and show up Saturday. So thank you for that reminder, Jim. So public comment, Haley, are there any members of, first off, do we have anybody out there in Zoom land attending the meeting at this moment?
We do not.
We do not. Okay. So I do have, I believe, four public comments. And they're all by the same person, Alinda Prentice, who has been commenting in recent months. And I believe Linda's getting a bit impatient. So let me, and she has some words here that are in cap capitalized. So I will express them with a little bit more vocalization. So this is Linda Prentice. And by the way, she's also forwarding these to the other committees as well as our board. So here's comment number one. I am outraged that you intend to spend our tax money to build anything with as many bathrooms as are required in an outdoor public use area as described in the skate park initial review, specifically using my tax money from the five lots I own on Norwich that you won't allow me to build on. Linda Prentice. Public comment number two. Linda Prentice, please convey my outrage that a large park with several bathrooms would even be considered when I owned five lots on Norwich with water meter 91 that I can't build on. Where is your fairness? Public comment number three from Linda Prentice. Although I am for children's activities, if the agenda item regarding skate park is enlargement, I am against it due to additional bathroom requirements, i.e. water usage until at least 100 building permits are issued. Written public comment number four from Linda Prentice. Please reconsider the building moratorium by allowing 100 permits. Please let me live my last years on my dream property. Yes, I am over 75. Thank you, Linda. I am also over 75, as are two other of the members of this committee. Right. Moving on to consent agenda. So we are here to approve.
Harry, I have a question.
Yes, excuse me, Jim.
Do we, I'm sorry, do we have any idea on the difference between the amount of water that's used by a restroom as opposed to like a residence?
I would imagine it would depend on how frequently that restroom is going to be used.
And.
I would imagine it would be more than a resident. Let's say we're going to have a restroom out on the East Ranch. Once the East Ranch has been, once some of these low impact recreational opportunities will be happening on the East Ranch, I would imagine that restroom, unless it's a very large family in our community, that that restroom will have a little bit more usage than the average family that has somewhere between one to four, you know, one to four folks living in a home here in Cambridge.
And sort of the corollary to that is that there's, there's tons of like prefab restroom facilities out there that, that don't use any water. And has there been any discussion of maybe building facilities that don't use any water as?
This.
A lot of water.
Let's just put it this way. I'm probably not the only person that brought it up, but I have brought up as a board member on more than one occasion, perhaps considering waterless toilets. But for a variety of reasons, I think mostly health reasons, that, that has been ignored, at least for the present time. Okay. But personally, I feel your point is well taken. But we shall see what happens as we move forward. But right now, the board has approved the building of a unisex, I believe, a unisex restroom on the East Ranch that, as far as I know, right now, not that this is pertinent, but I believe the cost is going to be $361,000. And there's also probably going to be the need for a public restroom at the skate park across the street. Yes, to this or how?
Just to add on that, the 300 something thousand dollars, half of that was a grant. So it's not costing the districts. The other thing is the planning, unless it's changed, they're planning to use non-pulpable water.
Right.
That makes a big difference. So for hand washing, they'll have a separate, a separate thing.
Yeah, I believe the grant, if I'm not mistaken, is for $160,000. Thank you for bringing, thank you for bringing that up, Tom.
Follow up on that reason. I realize this is not our, this is our.
Yeah, this isn't our.
Our thing there. But the, just, just, I'd point out that the, the grant funds could be used for any one of a number of purposes. So there's like an opportunity cost to spending it on a restroom.
That's.
When reasonable people would say that you could accomplish the same goal for several hundred thousand dollars less. Let the record show. Didn't do any good when I brought it up last.
So with regard to the record, just that is 33 or 45 or 78.
At my age, probably 78.
Thank you. Let's move on to the consent agenda if we don't mind. And we are going to be approving the January 26th, February 23rd, and March 23rd regular meeting minutes. Any members of the committee here have any observations of making any type of alterations on those minutes? Yes, Jim?
On the February 23rd meeting, which I did not attend, my, my name is spelled wrong consistently throughout the document. They got it right on January 26th and March 23rd, but the February, they've got an H and O. Evidence of action.
Right. So that will be corrected. That will be corrected by our committee secretary. And by the way, I just want to mention how much I, and I think other committee members appreciate the fact that Mr. Howell offered his services as committee secretary. All right. So let's, let's move on now to regular business and item A, discussion and consideration of a needs assessment for review and reorganization of the district's current purchasing policy document. And that's on page 10. Let me, let me get a, go ahead and read the introduction. In November of 2019, the board referred the question to the policy committee regarding the district's policy on purchasing and equipment. In response to policy committee created by an ad hoc subcommittee to review the current purchasing policy and recommended the committee how best to proceed. After that initial review by the subcommittee, the policy committee put a project on hold in favor of more pressing business. Since that time, there has been no change to the district's purchasing policy. Therefore, in creating this needs assessment, we bring forward the results of that early review and make the following observations and recommendations. So we do have the subcommittee here, the ad hoc subcommittee of Mr. Howell and Mr. Key. So I don't know, I let one of you read the observations.
Observations, one, the district's current purchase purchasing policy document was last reviewed by the board in September 2015. Nearly eight years have passed since then, and as likely some of the document is outdated. Observation two. The current purchasing policy document is a pastiche. Is that right?
If I can, if I can interject here. So Mr. Howell, committee member Howell and I had a discussion over his choice of this word. And I recommended that we use the word podge podge, which I think more people have an understanding of, which is basically a confusing mixture, in this case, a confusing mixture of policies that at time overlap. So hope you don't mind me interjecting.
Not at all. Thank you for that clarification.
Not a problem. So go right ahead.
Chair Farm. It appears that it has been allowed to grow without reorganization. Related items aren't always placed together. For example, the 10 sections of Article 16 Additional Purchasing Policies and Procedures contains directives that would more logically appear and other sections of the document. As a result, users must read the entire document to be certain they have a complete guidance regarding a given purchasing activity or decision. The current, observation three, the current purchasing policy document is too broad. It covers not just purchasing, but four other CSDA policy categories. As a result, it becomes difficult to identify duplications and contradictions with other district policies. As an example, listed here with their CSDA numbers are the five CSDA policy categories covered by the current policy purchase, current purchasing document. 2110, budget preparation. 2115, credit card use plus some additional travel related requirements. 2120, appointment of outside contractors and consultants, including bids and professional services agreements. 2125, expense authorization, including commitment, authority, signing, authority, approval requirements, purchase orders, open purchase orders, invoice approval and procedures, and petty cash procedures. 2135, purchasing, including procurement methods, documentation requirements, quotations, check signing procedures, conflict of interest, and vendor lists. And additionally, observation four, the current document does not distinguish between policies and procedures properly established by the board and operational policies and procedures that might be better left up to the general manager. Recommendations. We recommend that the policy committee reorder and reorganize the current district policy document into the CSDA policy categories and apply the CSDA numbering system. Recommendation two, review the reorganized policy document to identify duplications and contradictions with other current district policies and report back to the board for further direction. Three, review the reorganized policy document to identify those operational policies and procedures that would be better left up to the general manager and report back to the board for guidance.
So first, I want to, you know, compliment both of you, Mr. Key and Mr. Howell, for taking the time to review all of this purchasing, the entire purchasing policy document and come back with this information. I know you've spent a lot of time and energy in doing so. So I just want to say how much I appreciate that. So we're open for discussion on this particular item. And then afterward, we will make a motion to forward this to the board to request a needs assessment for this. Yes, Mr. Howell.
Yeah, as we are hoping to hear some from the rest of you.
Right.
But I wanted to point one way, having reviewed this and then in discussion with the chairman of farm, it comes to mind that the two appendices may not be that helpful in terms of making this really what this is, what Ted is, what, really, that is the needs assessment. You know, it's the document that we want to pass to the board and say, this is our conclusions. And one thing that I would like to hear from you all is whether you think the appendices are helpful or not. I have a feeling that they actually add to the confusion rather than, so they don't really help to make the point. So I just wanted to throw that out. So the real question is, is this an adequate needs assessment? Is it understandable? Is it clear? Are we making a good case? That kind of thing.
Good job. One of the manuals is half a page. So there's a lot of room from our CSDA sample book. So, but there are, this information was more than gathered from the existing one back eight years ago. And says need some revision, which you've outlined very well, I think, and did an excellent job. Even with your appendices, I was following what you were trying to do, which it took, you know, back and forth a little bit to see the differences between the two. So I'm very pleased with your time and effort and well spent. I would think a board of directors would be excited to have this opportunity of us doing this for them.
That might be a slight overstatement about them, the board being excited, but I think they would certainly be appreciative of.
I'd be excited.
Okay, thank you, Gordon. Yes, Mr. Townsend.
Well, first of all, I agree that I think the appendices add uneven complexity. And pretty much everything in there is covered within the other, the other information there. For the most part, as I sort of read through this, it kind of like a, most of it with, with a few notable exceptions, we're kind of like a, where's Waldo exercise where the, the adopted CCSD purchasing policy and the one put out by CSK are very similar. And again, I think, I think given the, the CSDA's long experience with this, there's really no reason for our district to spend a lot of time reinventing the wheel. I think we base most of what we did, what we did on that. I, I do think we might consider suggesting potentially adding some language regarding environmental sensitivity and, you know, purchasing materials that are recyclable and usable as opposed to stuff, stuff that isn't, we might, we might want to, want to inject a little bit of an environmental.
Right, well, right, right. Like you say, recyclable, non polluting, as best as possible.
Yeah, non emitting when, when, when possible.
Right.
I understand they don't make the trucks yet that run on electricity and when they do, they're, they're come $200,000. But smaller vehicles, power equipment, things like that, the, the, the quality of the battery operated weed whackers and things like that. It's so good these days. There's really no reason for people to use fuel cell to cycle.
Yeah.
Terrible. Well, I, I certainly appreciate you bringing that up.
So I suggest we might want to consider that.
Yeah, I think that's certainly, I think a direction with the board that we have right now and the general manager that we have, that moving, that moving into more environmentally friendly a way of doing business at the district is certainly where, where we're headed. So thank you for.
We ask everybody in the community to do that. So.
Right. Yeah, yes.
If I may ask a question, you know, I formulated a climate policy needs assessment at one point in time and it's moved on to the RNI committee. I'm not exactly sure where that all is. I believe they have an ad hoc committee looking at it. You know, of course, we want to move that forward as fast as possible. Perhaps, you know, perhaps there could be some cross communication between RNI, that ad hoc committee, and something that we would include in the purchasing policy. You know, that kind of got taken out of our hands, but I think it would be important information to know if we were going to add some of these components in purchasing policy, what the RNI committee had, had, you know, considered.
Well, that's, I probably should be reaching out to, to President Dean, who's also the chair of RNI.
Is she still the chair of RNI?
Yeah. And get some feedback from her. For some reason, I'm thinking last, last time I saw an RNI meeting where that was discussed, her, she's part of the committee, I believe. They're going to be coming back in June with some update on, with regard to, like I was saying, having a, an environmentally friendly, I'm losing, I'm trying, am I trying to thought here, with regard to an environmental policy? Yes.
One of the things that I understood from the district engineer was that, you know, we're far and away not the only district that is looking at conforming to certain requirements that are coming from the state, I believe. So, you know, what, what they have been looking at so far, hopefully, we would, that, that also would, would be giving everybody some direction here to make sure that what we're doing is congruent with the needs that are coming down the pipe. I mean, that's, you know, it's my understanding that the district engineer is all on board with the climate policy, simple post, you know.
I, I believe that he is, but I think we're getting a little off topic.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, sorry.
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Howell.
Perhaps it might help that, if you wouldn't take a glance at the first appendix. It might help as I'm listening to this discussion.
And what page are we on?
That would be page 12 of the packet. Here it is. It says, CSDA is the purchase and related policy table of contents. So that would be, again, that would be reflected for the comparison. This might be useful to include because this shows if, if we were to do what we recommend, which is to reorganize, reshape it, reorganize it so that like things are put together and related areas are put together, that this is what would be the end result, would be a series of these policies that's listed here. And I'm thinking, Jim, in particular, and also the whole issue, you can see as you look the area where there, once this, if, if it's agreeable, then there are places here where you could insert. There would be a, you know, a section for environmental concern. But there is, just for my way, and just as an example, there is, there is guidance in this policy, but it's old. Having to do with, with using really low businesses whenever we can ride, using local businesses. Yeah. And so those are guidelines that are already in here. Yeah. And obviously there's room for others. Yeah. Biggest problem is if those guidelines are scattered throughout.
Right, right.
So this is what it would look like if we were given permission to reorganize. So even without adding any new material.
Yeah. So the structural purchase. Still, the structure remains the same. It's just that this would be one more aspect to, to all of the areas.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
So I think based on what I'm hearing, see how, how does this sound? Instead of appendix A, just if we include as a, as the final statement, if this reorganization were to pursue, this is what it would look like.
Yeah, yeah.
And that would give a sense as to the scope, the scope of the thing. And basically, all these topics that we see are in the existing policy, but they're just.
And, and I, I believe, just looking at this, that that would show that this reorganization has flexibility to be dynamic.
Exactly. Yeah, as it can grow and expand in an orderly way.
Right, right, right.
That's another argument maybe, but in the needs assessment. So I guess what is, oh, I should shut up.
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I would like to point out that at the, at the end of the day, you know, all this is about making, making it easier for everybody in the district to, who's involved with these aspects of the district to, to be able to just go to one spot and really get to the heart of the matter and know that, you know, what, what they, what they have is not only current, but is complete in its, in its individual, in its individual manifestation, if you will.
Well, obviously, the goal here is to have a purchasing policy that operates much, much more simply and therefore much more efficient.
Right, right.
Absolutely, absolutely. There's another, oh, sorry. There's another matter that is only briefly touching here in that had to do with one thing which Ted and I first discovered as we started through this and we spent quite a lot of time going through and also working with Monique to some degree as well. But one thing that we noticed and we make in our fourth observation or recommendation, it brings this forward, but I don't know. It's kind of a separate issue. It's, it has to do with the level of the policies. As I said, there are, there are, well, a high level policy would be something like purchasing decisions should be governed by climate concerns whenever possible. That's a high level thing. But department heads should be certain. Should be signing up on purchase orders. That's operational. And probably the board doesn't need to get into that. But the current policy does. It's very, very detailed. It's who gets to what and to whom. I, every reason we learn that, we don't know if it didn't follow. And it's really, I think. Uh, and it's really, I think, previous boards were really, you know, with their hands and, and kind of mucking around with the organization. Uh, and I'm not proposing that we change that now, but I think that once we, if we go forward with this reorganization, then in another step would be to pass through it and see about this issue.
Yeah, if, if, if I may add one thing to that is that, um, you know, when, when we propose a policy like, like this one, uh, that the procedures that are attached to it, um, should be well-reviewed by, by those constituencies to, so that they, so that they understand, um, um, what, that, that, that they have, that they have, uh, uh, the, um, ability to make sure that the procedures that, um, are outgrowths from this policy um, are, um, instructed in a way that, uh, makes it, uh, much more, um, that, that, that continues a lot of the processes that are already in place, but does so in an organized fashion. I, this is what I want to say.
Um, yeah, if, if you don't mind, Ted, when you say well-received by those constituencies, uh, who are you referring to?
I'm referring to staff primarily, staff and those people who are, you know, who are actually involved in, you know, moving the paperwork, uh, you know, signing the, the approvals, um, uh, all of the, all of the procedures that are involved with, of, of, you know, we, we, we'll be having a policy here, but the procedures of implementing the policy, um, are, are, are such that staff has had an opportunity to say, okay, I recognize that, we'll, we'll continue to do that. It'll bite this policy in this way, or this policy now, uh, uh, means that there's the means by which we've, we're doing what we've always done, or what, you know, what we typically do is somehow recognized in the, the procedure recommendations that are an outgrowth of this policy. And I don't know if I'm making sense there.
Um, I, I wouldn't say that I necessarily quite understand the point that you're trying to make, Ted. Um, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna quarrel with what you're saying. Uh, Gordon, did you wish to add something?
Part of our policy commitment is to work with the staff and their input to relationship to what the policies would do.
Right.
That's, I guess, I guess that's, in, in a nutshell. Right, I agree with you, what you're saying, but that's what I'm, yeah, I'm understanding is that without their input and support.
Exactly.
We're not doing well.
Exactly. I, I guess that's what, I, thank you. Vice Chair Heinrichs, I appreciate you giving us a little bit of clarity on that. So, um, is there a need for any further discussion here, or do we, uh, wish to make a, yes, uh?
I had two, are we allowed to sort of raise a couple of specific?
Absolutely.
Okay, I have two. The, 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 the first one had to do with the language regarding sole source contracts, which I think could, could very much be tightened up. I think in, in my observations in the district over the years, they tended to lean
Okay.
a little more heavily on sole source contracts than they really need to. It was a.
And can you, can you give us a, a, a little more of an understanding what a sole source contract?
A sole source contract is where for some sort of maybe an extensive piece of capital equipment, rather than put it out to bid.
Right.
Um, um, the staff picks a vendor
Right.
and buys directly from that vendor without any competitive, competitive bidding there.
Correct.
There was a recent purchase of a, or an agreement purchase of a new fire truck.
Right.
Um, um, that, um, the explanation for why it was a sole source contract was, we've always done it that way. Which was, I didn't, I didn't personally find that to be a, a, a compelling, compelling argument.
Um, there.
And, um, and based on, um, a, a, a very high-level internet search that I did, there were, there were actually four or five vendors in the state that provided the, the, essentially the same piece of equipment that, widely varying prices there. So that would be, that would be my, my first comment. And then, can I do my second one first?
No.
No?
This relates to your comments.
Okay.
Like, that's like, I would appreciate that. Yeah, your good comment is what I'm suggesting is good. I agree with you a hundred percent. And the reasoning that I understood was they went out for free bids, but they went out, only went out to Ford. And that's what I brought up several times, that there are other manufacturers. So I agree with you, that it's limited. But then they have this little comment that, uh, I don't know, my last sentence of the process. Anyway, if it's an emergency, then nothing applies. They can do whatever they want. That's what I gotta take out.
Kind of have to define emergency, they're gonna do that, because a lot of times it seems like everything's an emergency.
That's how we do things. That's why I'm agreeing with you a hundred percent.
And that's very interesting. It's a great line to stick alike thing, if I can go to my second comment here. And my second comment was that, that I would also, um, encourage that we recommend that the board adopt some language that any major capital purchase, and you can pick a dollar amount that makes sense, um, um, be brought to the board a minimum of thirty days before that, um, that contract would need to be executed. Another thing that I've seen based on my limited experience here, is there's plenty of times that staff comes to the board and says, you know, and the first time the board sees something and, and, and they're told, well, you have to decide today. Because the price is going up tomorrow, or I mean, it's like, it's like a used car salesman type deal, you know? Um, um, so I would suggest that we could also, uh, particularly in the case of a sole source contract, that the board be given thirty days to review the proposal before acting on it, that, 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 that staff is no longer in a position to come to the board on Monday and say, we need to check tomorrow. Or this is gonna turn to a pumpkin or something.
Yeah, I, I would say, Jim, uh, Mr. Townsend, you know, both of your points are, are very well taken. Um, especially what you just said, that has happened on more than one occasion.
Right.
Where the board gets the contract right there and they need to act upon it. Um, I also want to mention the fact that part of the reason that we are examining this purchasing policy is because what you said just a moment ago about an emergency. This was initially brought once again to our attention, uh, when recently the fire chief proposed needing to, uh, purchase, uh, uh, equipment to be used in emergencies such as what happened recently with the storms that we had.
Hmm.
And the members of the fire department needed equipment that wasn't available. And so they requested that we act upon this as, you know, expeditiously as possible. So that's a, an example of what you're bringing up.
If you're gonna buy something that's not gonna be delivered for several years, I mean, by definition, it's not an, an emergency.
Well, uh, if I'm not mistaken, and I might be off topic here, much of what was purchased by that emergency request, uh, was received very, very quickly.
It was PPE mostly, wasn't it?
Right, right. Anyway, I'm, I'm probably getting off topic here, so.
And, and, and I would agree with that, and I would, and I would say that most of those dollar amounts probably would rise to a, a, a level where I personally would be particularly concerned about.
Yeah, so, um, if, uh, if no one has any further comments on this, um, let me, let me just say, if we do make a motion that's approved with regard to forwarding this needs assessment to the board, that perhaps if any of you, uh, committee members have some additional comments like you've made here, uh, that you'd wish to pass on to, um, Mr. Howell and Mr. Key, before we send this on to the board, please contact them as quickly as possible. So we know what document we're gonna be forwarding, what statement, yes.
Just sort of point of clarification, are we, are we forwarding this to the board with the recommendation that they adopt this policy? Or with the recommendation?
They approve the needs assessment.
Okay, 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 fine. Yep, I'm, I'm, I'm down with that.
You know, we kind of, this doesn't, so far we haven't really dealt with the culture.
Right, right, right.
And, and I'm thinking the reason that, that Ted and I suggested was, that, yeah, the thing is so urgent, so.
Sure.
Yeah, we started, you know, back in three years ago, making this change and that change, and then we realized, but wait a minute, it's gonna be so difficult to even present those changes. So, I said, we said, stop.
Right, right.
And, and so what, what we did was, we took the existing, you know, the, the existing purchasing document, made no material change, but totally changed the order and.
Sure, to clearly, uh, be more consistent with the CSDA.
Or we're just, we're just organized and like things are in the same place.
Makes really sense.
And the, and I think the idea is to get that far and then come back.
Yeah.
And start hitting the content.
Yeah, great.
However, I, forgive me, Claudia, you seem to have a number of red lines on the needs assessment. So, I, I, do you have some thoughts that, uh?
Can I say something first? Um, I don't see very well in the dark, and I was wondering if this is part of something to save energy? Or you just, nobody forgot about turning the lights on?
I think it's that one over there. I, I, I think so. It's been a fair amount of time. I can't tell you how many times. Who's the one where we're sitting?
Unfortunately, Claudia, the lights. Excuse me, pardon me. Thank you, uh, Claudia. I just wanted to let you know that the lights above us aren't working, so, um, our apologies for that, okay?
Thank you. Um, um, let me actually, we just showed them these assessments, we bring forward them. I just said the, we have already looked at need the, this, oh. I know, I'm like, we are being like. We, we already looked at this, as Don said, I don't know why we're going through a needs, that was just my personal opinion. Why are we going through a needs assessment when we've already looked at this two years ago or longer? Um, I think we should be, you know, we should let our, uh, subcommittee, which was, is, is Don, we can, um, that, let them, but, take the information we learned today, put that together and come back next month with a proposal to, to send to the CCSD as opposed to just asking what we should do, because you've already done it, you know, so that's just like a stream. Okay, and then, um, uh, policy out of order, I just got policy out of order, I don't know that.
Okay.
Um, um, you know, current purchasing policy, documents too broad, I just underlined it, and, um, well, yeah, I just underline those things because I just think, oh, that, those are the kinds of things, if you, if you determine this, that, you know, if we, your, if your committee, you can do that, um, you know, put these things in order that you said you've done, or you started.
Yeah, go, go ahead.
So, what I'm saying is, just, I make, I would like to make a motion that we have the, the committee take the information that we got today, some really good points, and, and move forward with a, a suggested, a suggested, suggested policy, and then, and then, you know, then vote on it in the next meeting and see if we want to forward it to the CSD, so, I mean, to the board. Now, they had one other thing here, um, um, it comes to purchasing policy, I think, and maybe you talked to, I'm sorry, I, for some reason, I wrote down three thirty. So, um, anyway, add environmental policy, such as electric cars and things like that. So did you already? Yeah.
Uh, can I respond?
Right, ahead, Mr. Howell.
So, so Claudia, this is, this needs, this, this that you have, which is basically a two-page document with a couple of the things. But not the whole business, it's not, it's, it's basically the two pages.
Mm-hmm.
That is the needs assessment.
Oh.
See, what happened was, we did this, Ted and I did this back in, in, uh, when we were team, it's never got to the board.
Yeah, I know, but I.
So now we're trying to send it to the, see, that's where we are.
Yeah.
So, so what Ted and I are asking the committee here is, this, is this an adequate needs assessment, where, for what we're proposing, is it clear and is it convincing? But, but without the content, we're not, we haven't even addressed content yet.
How can you ask, how can you ask the board, though?
Well, well, here's what we're doing.
No, and how can you ask them to assess something that doesn't have any content, so?
What we're asking is.
If we can work on it.
Just want to know if you can work on it.
Yes, make sure you remember the rules here. That's a bylaw we were trying to change.
Yeah.
One point.
At the level of content, other than, we're one of the lower organization.
Yeah, I understand that, I understand. Oh, and I just, the point is that we've already addressed this two years ago.
It had never come back to the committee.
Yeah.
It, it, this is the very first time this, this committee has ever seen.
And under this, under, under the.
Because I thought for sure we had talked about it.
Well, we may have, we may have discussed it, but nothing was submitted to the board.
It was submitted, but I know we talked about it.
Yeah, but under the, under the new guidelines, we, we, we are asked to do.
You have to do a needs.
The needs assessment prior to this, although, I mean, if you look at, you know, what is being presented as appendix C secure, a great deal of the analysis has been completed. So if, so if they say, yes, please move forward, we will have a lot of stuff.
We're ready.
Well, I mean, we're, yeah, we're ready to rock and roll. So, so, I, I think what, I think what you're getting at is how can we get this thing to move forward successfully?
Yeah.
And, 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 and the answer to that is, uh, it, within the new structure, this probably does that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so would someone like to make a motion to, uh, or the approval for a needs assessment to the board? I believe that, is that what we're doing here?
To, to, to forward the needs assessment.
The needs assessment, oh, line.
This is the needs assessment.
Yeah, save, save, save the content discussions, which are, we have, had in our excellence, as a matter of fact, but to save those for.
Hey.
The return.
Let's try this, move to, forward to the board, even needs assessment as represented by, uh, pages. Um, however, it's gonna be anything except the appendices. You know, it's, we, we, we do. And, and one addition, which is the, you guys see the field that was, uh, uh, to, uh, where.
Thank you, Claudia.
The organized document we've looked at, as, as, and then list the table of costs. So. And I'm, I'm not.
So, yeah, no, I, yeah, I understand that, which is saying I don't.
You usually translate it, don't you?
Well, you're just saying that along with the needs assessment, that we submit the, the new structural organization as, as, as the appendices at this moment in time, leaving all of these other, you know, details, which are wonderful, but, uh, but may not be appropriate at this particular juncture.
Yeah, that's kind of a complicated motion, but.
Yeah.
Well, what, what? Why don't we make an effort to simplify the definition of this motion?
Yeah, motion to this.
What did it ask me? It's like paper, concede on this.
On motion to, well, what we're asking is the board, because I said, this is our needs assessment.
Well, then, what?
Can I, can I, can I do that as a member of the ad hoc or someone outside the?
You, you can do that, and I think, like, item A, just go ahead and use that description that's right there.
Pretty good to me.
Thank you very much.
Well, review and reorganization of districts.
Uh, let's put it this way, um, I'll make a motion that we approve the needs assessment for a review and reorganization of the district's current purchasing policy document.
I second.
Oh, thank you, thank you, it's very nice. Discuss.
Good job.
Who is someone that would like to move to?
Eric, did you say the? It's already written there.
Okay, oh, approve the needs assessment.
For a review and reorganization of the district's current purchasing policy department.
Uh, gotcha.
Just like it's written.
Very, uh, okay.
You gotta wake up, damn. You gotta wake up, damn.
Sorry, and I believe, Mr. Townsend, did you second that?
I did.
So, okay.
So, um, I'll go ahead and do a roll call here, if nobody minds.
Discussion.
You mean, or, and you have any, we do public, or do you have some?
Oh, let, let me, um, I have a comment. General Manager McElhaney, in observing this, uh, this discussion, uh, do you have any comments to make, uh, on this particular item?
What I'd like to do is sit down with this item.
What I'd like to do is sit down with this item, Haley, Mrs. Fritz, and think about what we have been doing, what's been working and not working. And then I have a better idea how to approach that answer.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Sure.
Um, but it definitely sounds like a good start to cleaning up our processes and then letting everybody have a say in those processes. Right now, a lot of those processes happen in the district office.
Right.
And our, the general public doesn't understand the process.
Absolutely.
And being new to the system, I don't fully understand our processes.
Sure.
So I'm in there already. I'm looking at fuel costs and I'm looking at all these different financial things that's occurring in the district. And so I'm on Denise's hip, so to speak. So I, I definitely will be coming back to this committee. Just talk more about that. Maybe I can give a little more of a feedback on what's happening inside the district office, if that makes sense.
That's probably the feedback that we needed.
Okay.
Right there.
Yeah.
And I would hope that if we just jump in again, uh, if we don't make any material change, you know, we don't chase the content, just the organization. That will be the first step to the, to the process that you're talking about, because then what you'll be able to sit down with, with Pam or Denise or her table and say, what about this stuff?
Right.
And it's all nicely packaged, right? Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Okay.
I think it will work. We should, we should probably get authorization from the board to proceed and then you, the general manager.
Exactly.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, oh, exactly.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, but I will on the back end, my due diligence, just to kind of see our processes in the background, so I can speak to it better.
It, it will be imperative.
Yeah, correct.
So. So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Townsend, you were just saying that you would like further discussion.
No, 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 I was just.
Do we have?
Inquiring as to whether there was any discussion, which I think we just had.
Thank you.
Cool.
We didn't have public discussion, but somebody in public.
Right.
Do we have people that are zooming in to this?
Nobody's attending this meeting, unless they arrive late.
I wrote down three thirty.
We're just not very interested.
Okay, so I, I think what I'll do is, uh, I will go ahead and call the roll. I, I think that's proper. So, um. Chair Farmer, um, how do you vote? Aye. Mr. Townsend, how do you vote?
Aye.
Um, Mr. Key.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Howell.
Aye.
And even though you arrived late, uh, Miss, uh.
Whatever.
Claudia, Harmon, that's Harmon. Uh, how do you vote?
I.
Thank you. All right, we have unanimous. Oh, I didn't ask you already. I'm cool. Yeah, it's all right. Oh, man. Okay, Vice Chair Heinrich.
All right.
Thank you, buddy. My apologies.
Too close to here.
That's it. All right, by the way, by the way, uh, I've already set a fairly poor example as to how to run a meeting, because for our general managers, just wanted to let them know. Um, I don't believe that I asked for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, that's right.
You didn't, but that's okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
We're very informal here, you see. So, so Haley's giving me a look, but, um, all right, so if we could just backtrack for a moment. We did have a discussion on the consent agenda and the minutes of three meetings. Um, so do I, uh? Do I hear a motion to approve acceptance of the consent agenda?
With the.
With, with the corrections that were noted by Mr. Townsend.
Yeah. Well, uh, yes, I make the motion to approve.
All right, do we have a second?
I'm gonna.
So, Mr. Key, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Heinrichs, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Townsend.
Aye.
Um, Mr. Howell.
Aye.
And, uh.
Wait a minute. Hi.
Thank you. Let's move on to item, uh, regular business three B on page thirty.
All right.
Yeah, some new stuff. Sounds good. That's true. We like this.
So this is, um, the discussion of, uh, social media policy. So let me, um.
Yeah, can we get a summary of this?
Okay, so what, what I'm, what I'd like. There's a, one, one page thirty.
Page thirty, social media policy. Yes. Number twenty-four fifteen. Okay.
So what's happening here? The reason that this has been brought to our attention, um, is that we had a, um. We had a member of the public. Make a written comment that was read at one of our board, one of our committee meetings regarding comments that were made by members of committees. Um, in social media, but not board social media that is on like Nextdoor and Facebook, but out there on Nextdoor. For the general public, so to speak. And, uh, so why don't I go ahead and read? The public comments. This kind of, uh, was just to bring this item for discussions. And this is from, uh, Holly Ledwixson, and, and this was read at our February meeting. I would like to request the acting general manager of the C C S D to remind the policy committee members about an existing social media policy, policy twenty-four, twenty-four fifteen. Approved by the C C S D on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, that outlines approved guidelines regarding commenting and posting on social media sites. And I'll use in print with not district, okay, about C C S D business by district and by quote, district employees and district officials. As well as consultants and contractors performing work on behalf of the district, unquote, as stated in the policy's purpose. Going on with what Ms. Ledwixson was saying. I feel a formal and annual review of the existing social media policy with members of standing committees is warranted. Based on posts and comments that showed up on Nextdoor and local Facebook sites by standing committee members with misinformation. And unsupported allegations. She goes on. Two examples come to mind. Misinformation by a finance committee member about components of the most recent Prop two eighteen. The recent accusa, and the recent accusations by a policy committee member that C C S D is influencing. Community members' trash bin choices in order for C C S D to benefit financially. In interest of C C S D board transparency and greater community involvement, I cannot understand, meeting Ms. Ledwixson. I cannot understand how standing committee members incorrect social media posts, comments. Could be anything but harmful to community members' understanding of current C C S D concerns and projects. Besides being in violation of C C S D policy on social media communication. I recognize how tantalizing it is to speak from an, quote, official position, having, quote, insider, unquote, information. But sharing misunderstood prejudice and incorrect information is dangerous. Since the current and approved C C S D social media policy, policy compares, appears to be consistently observed by board members. But not all by, not, not by all committee members. An annual review of the policy with committee members should be beneficial. Thank you. Holly Ledwixson, homeowner, small business owner, and full-time resident of Cambria. So the main issue that we're dealing with here is that. We have committee members commenting on non-district social media sites. Um, and therefore this is creating a bit of difficulty with the public. So we need to include in our social media policy, uh, not, uh, non-district media sites. In other words, Facebook and Nextdoor. We need to include a policy with regard to committee members or board members, for that matter. Commenting on unofficial sites. So that, that's what, I believe that's what we're going to be doing. Yes.
That's, that's what's being requested.
Correct.
If not necessarily what we need to do.
Correct. I, that's what's being requested. And I think, I think somehow we need to make an adjustment on the social policy. Our social media policy to include non-district sites.
It isn't.
Because these comments are being made out on regular Nextdoor.
Under definitions, under A, that pretty much describes pretty much all the social media sites that I'm aware of. It's already there. So you got Wikipedia, Nextdoor, Facebook, YouTube.
YouTube.
Flickr, Twitter. LinkedIn. I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm like. If, if someone violated the social media policy, then, then, then maybe. Someone should.
Have a.
Point out that the policy was violated.
Yeah.
But it doesn't mean that the policy needs to be changed.
Right.
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 Yeah.
Well, perhaps I, perhaps I slightly misunderstood the definition of twenty-four fifteen point two.
I mean, it doesn't say district managed sites. It just says.
Well, I, I discuss. So, so let, let, let me, let me say this. I discussed this, I did discuss this with President Dean. Uh, that, um, that she agreed that non-district social media needs to be included in this policy. In other words, we need to kind of broaden the scope of our social media policy. But you right now are saying.
It's already.
It's already.
What it looks like to me.
And, yes, go ahead, Mr. Howell.
Oh, I didn't mean to.
It says Nextdoor right here.
Well, that's just in the definitions, in terms of the actual.
Right, this is gonna say this is.
The only thing I'm seeing now is on page thirty-two.
Thank you.
First full paragraph.
Right.
That's why even like the, the, the official, uh, posting non-district social media sites. Are, with their own views and not necessarily, there's, there's the, they're not, they're not, they're not, I don't think there's any other version here dividing non-district businesses.
Uh, they're supposed to bring what up, so.
Being asked is that maybe there have been lots of examples.
Right. And, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Howell.
Right.
Uh, and, and if, if nobody minds, uh, I, I'd like to elaborate on the two points with regard to the comments that were made. That Ms. Ledwixson has brought up, if nobody minds. I think just to give us an example of what has been said. That prompted her to write this email.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um.
May I ask a question?
Sure. Why am I doing this?
Why are we doing this? It's a request of somebody sending in a letter to change this when it's not being directed by the board for us to change this.
We, we would, we would need to ask the board to do a needs assessment.
Right.
Whether we need.
That's what I'm saying. We're here responding to a.
Paul's letter.
Nobody ever responds to a response. Please notice that.
I, I haven't, I haven't.
I'm just asking. Now, we're getting.
Well, I think it's. Okay, I, I, um, your point's well taken and we're going to be discussing that. Um. Yes, Ms. Harmon.
Um, I think that it might be wise, if we're going to, for the trouble of changing things, we're asking for the assessment, then we find out what these things said worked.
Okay, well, that's, that's it.
Says something on.
That's about, that's what I'm, that is what I'm about.
Is in fact, is fact about the.
Well, that is, that is about, that is what I was about to do. Thank you. All right. So a finance committee member stated, or insisted, if you wish, that if Prop two eighteen was approved. Uh, with regard to trash, trash costs.
Yes.
Thereby raising water and wastewater rates, that employees of the district would get raises as a result.
Two eighteen, you just, you, the first half of that conversation said it was a two eighteen election regarding the trash.
Correct.
And then the second half of the station said it had to do with water and wastewater.
That's right.
Well.
Which was.
The prop, the Prop two eighteen had to do with an increase in water and wastewater rates. And if enough members of the community voted against that happening, then therefore we would not adopt it. But since not enough members of the community voiced their opposition to the raising of the rates, therefore they were approved.
I thought it was, I thought she was referring to the two eighteen regarding the increase in the trash rate.
That's what I just said.
No, you said water.
Water.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. My, my, my apologies. My apologies.
That the comment that was on Facebook was not about that section.
I mean, that sounded like, that sounds like.
I, 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 I wrote this down wrong. Okay?
Yeah.
It's about.
This was about the trash?
No, actually, no. Hold, hold on.
It was a trash bin sizes.
No, that, that, just a moment. Hold on, hold on. Just a moment. I appreciate the fact that I can get easily confused. Let me reread this. A finance committee member stated insisting that if Prop two eighteen was approved. Uh, thereby raising water and wastewater rates, that employees of the district would be getting raises as a result. Let me read the second one. A member of the policy committee claimed that smaller trash receptacles, bin choices. Were not being allowed by Mission Country Disposal to therefore ultimately financially benefit the district.
That's not a right, that's not a true quote.
Okay.
Well, it may not be a true quote, so, um, you know, I could ask you, uh, Ms. Harmon, since you're the one that made this statement. Out on Nextdoor, um, you can give us the exact quote that it is, but the fact is, you made the remark. And you know, this, we're not here to criticize you. We're here to point out that members of committees, both finance and policy. Have made statements out on social media that were incorrect.
This is not, what I said wasn't incorrect. The, the C C S D receives a percentage of the, the rate that is charged to people for their trash. You get eight percent. I don't know what the percentage is exactly, but C C S D gets a percentage. Was, so when the rates go up, C C S D gets a percentage of that rate increase, and that's what I said. Which is a fact, not a, a opinion.
However, you were alluding to the fact that we were not allowing smaller bins to therefore affect. The revenue that the district would collect. And the issue was the size of the bins. And the, uh, the head of Mission Country Disposal told us, us, the board and the community. That the reason that we weren't allowed to use the twenty gallon bins was because of the, uh, trucks that they brought out here. Weren't able to do that because these particular trucks that come to Cambria are further away than the ones that they use in Moro Bay. Where they, and Los Osos, where they are able to use the smaller bins. But because they have to use different trucks to come out here, therefore they're not able to accommodate the smaller bins. It has nothing, and had nothing to do with the fact that the district wanted to make more money. It was because of the inability of Mission Country to bring trucks here that allowed us to use the smaller receptions.
It is, well, there were other comments that were in that thread that talked about that. So my comment was that that is a part of, of that decision-making. Just to understand that this is a fact. The C C S D gets a percentage of rate increases. And that was my point. What came out of this, by the way, is that Karen Dean sent me two emails and said she's looking into this and seeing about getting the kind of trucks that. Uh, can come to Cambria, where we can have twenty gallon tank, twenty, twenty gallon, uh, trash can score. So it had a very positive outcome. Um, it's something that's, you know, that she looked into and it's something that we'll continue to try to, to accomplish for, for Cambria. That's, it's an important thing for Cambria because we have. Eighty percent of the people live here, are elderly.
Yeah, we, we, uh, you know what, Claudia? Uh, excuse me, Ms. Harmon. I understand that you're trying to somehow. Who legitimize the comment that you made. And somehow I feel as if we're kind of getting off the topic. And somehow I feel as if we're kind of getting off the topic.
Yes.
Because we're making it here more personal. So since you're defining what happened in a different way than I just defined it, we're going to move on.
Yeah.
And what we're going to do is discuss how do we implement what we're trying to do here? And that is to make sure that comments being made, um, on social media by members of committees or the board for that matter are, uh, done factual. And also that the statement is made that this is my personal opinion. Yes, Mr. How.
So I think what we're making, I'm, I'm hearing an argument being made to take this one, it's basically this one sentence as standard. Because right now, as I heard, this policy, if you only reference names to individuals in a private capacity, uh, on a non-district websites, is, is just this one paragraph of one sentence. And what I think we're hearing around here is that that guidance needs to be expanded.
Another, so, so go ahead, uh, are you talking about the sec, well, basically the first whole very short paragraph on page thirty two. So why don't you go ahead and reread that? Before, before we go on with further discussion.
So it's employees, employees, an elected or appointed official, now be us, posts to non-district social media sites. I mean, there's nothing wrong with this sentence, are a reflection of their own views or not necessarily those of the district and should not suggest otherwise. I don't have any problem with that sentence, but what I think I'm hearing is that we're asked to perhaps expand this a little more deeply into it. Uh, because here's the problem. The possibility that an official or such as us.
Touches us.
Uh, could on our own social media site take advantage of our presumed, you know, uh, more full perspective because we're, well, and therefore say things that might have a greater impact than if we were just ordinary folks. I think, in other words, you don't stop being a committee member just because you're not using a district website. If you're posting an Instagram media, everyone in this community, but unless you keep it a secret, I don't think, I think we're too small. I think, I think that we have to, and I know it's true with important ones, and they're very true. But committee members need to be also as careful in understanding that their words may have greater power than would normally be used. And so they have to be extra careful, even when they're not posting on district sites and they're using their own. I think that's what we're being asked in this case.
Right. And, uh, I think also, uh, the fact that if a committee member or a board member, in this case, committee members, happen to make a comment and then somebody else, either a committee member or a board member, makes another comment, then we're all of a sudden very quickly drifting into, uh, Board Brown Act violation.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, Mr. Towns.
I, I, I think this is a tempest in a teapot. Uh, I don't believe there's any need to modify the policy whatsoever. I think it clearly covers the disclosure of confidential information, which is, I think, the limit of what we should be able to do to infringe on the free speech rights of members of the Cambrian communities. While it may be true that members of committees and members of the board and members of staff don't stop being committee members or staff outside their official duty, they also don't stop being public citizens who have a right to express their opinions.
Um, but they have to be factual.
That's right, but that's. Well, I, 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 that would be.
Their interpretation.
And I'm not, I'm not, in my, in my experience in dealing with elected and appointed officials at C C S Ds, uh, there have been many, many, many times when I have heard statements made by elected and appointed officials that I would not consider to be factual.
Are you talking about on social media?
No, I'm talking about.
At board meetings, committee meetings?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So right now we are discussing social media.
Right. Right, so, so a- again, I don't think, I don't think the concerns raised by policies rises to the level of needing to try to amend the social media policy. That's, that's my opinion.
So.
And I would not vote to, to do that.
Okay, so you feel, and, uh, by what Mr. How has just read, that that is satisfactory to cover that we don't need to broaden in any way, shape or form what's already stated here?
Clearly, clearly, no one should be disclosing confidential district business, clearly.
Yeah.
The, the, the two eighteen election is in no way, shape or form confidential business, right? It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a public vote.
Right.
Um, um, some person used the word, uh, inability when they were describing the, uh, the, the trash company's inability to use different trucks that would use smaller, less expensive cans.
Of course.
And you can probably just as easily substitute the word unwillingness for inability.
Okay, well, you, that, that's your, that's your opinion.
That is my opinion. That's exactly right. That's.
Oh, yeah.
I, I, I have this, I have this, um.
I, I think. I think we're getting beyond what we're trying to determine here.
I, I, I agree with that. And again, my opinion is that we don't need to consider anything. I think, I think the policy is fine as it is.
I.
Ms. Harmon?
I, I did like to say something, um, that I, I agree with, with, um, June. I, I don't, I don't see where it needs to be changed. And, and when it comes to, you know, it depends on what's said. Uh, it, it's a legal thing. So if you say something that is true, you know, then, then you aren't putting yourself out there for any kind of legal repercussion. Um, we have to remember that this is one letter and it was written by somebody who's very vindictive. I know this because I dealt with this.
All right, hold, hold on, hold on, you know what, hold on, hold on.
That's what I'm saying. And I don't think that we should change the policy because one person wrote a letter, you know, an angry person wrote a letter. And I just think that, you know, if you look at the way it's written, it really does cover all this. And, you know, it, it, you know, it.
Okay.
So, I, I, anyway, I just want to say I agree with you.
Okay, so, uh, you know, it's funny, you've said something, Claudia, just a moment ago. And I feel like we're getting off the topic here, but since it is kind of personal because you are involved, you said, if the statement is true.
Don't.
Then, and now, and now, hold on. What you said was, if the statement is true that somebody has posted on social media, then there's no problem.
Not legally, not legally.
The problem, the problem, the problem is, we have two examples of statements that were made that weren't true. And that's why this is being brought to us.
Well, there's another deeper issue, actually.
This is part of the reason this is being brought to us.
Yeah.
This is part of the reason that it's become, uh, that someone is concerned about, out in the public.
Think what I'm getting here is I'm, sorry to just jump.
No, go.
Uh, I think the issue, here's the deal. Board members are normally very careful. So when they go out on social media and, and, and if they overstep a little bit, they are fellow board members who really won't get after. That is how. Uh, I think the problem which is being brought forward here is that the, uh, committee members are as subject to the Brown Act as board members. And there's a paragraph of, prior to the, I think that we were looking at. Will you confuse.
Me, if we go back to thirty one.
The paragraph right before, which starts on the previous page. Uh, it's a government, also, that's a member of a legislative body, it says, this is just before the building, he was wrong. But more of the, of, uh, page thirty one. From the finding, the record, any communication on the internet, social media platform regarding a matter that's subject to a jurisdiction on the body. Uh, the, the problem is that I think that, and so I'm kind of wondering, but maybe what's being asked here is that committee members should be as fully aware and as fully as careful as, as the board members are in terms of Brown Act violations. And so if, if you were too common, in other words, as a board member, you have to be very careful, common, uh, forget board things, just social media, you have to be extremely careful. Because, uh, you could easily develop, uh, whatever, I forget the word now, but where.
A quorum.
A quorum, you know, and so that's the same holds true for these committees. But that isn't emphasis. And I think that's probably what might be called for here is that committee members are under the absolute same restrictions. And which is why, so if you read that paragraph.
Yep.
So it, uh.
It is evidence. I mean, you.
Yeah.
Where.
Yeah, it's, it's it.
Above that, the sentence says, in addition, social media.
Right.
Be in compliance with California's Brown Act. I don't, I don't, to discuss among yourselves, I don't see where there's an issue.
I think the issue is that it gets lost because people just begin to assume that, that they're not under the same restrictions.
Why would they assume that? It says right here that they are.
Because that's what we see happen.
Yeah, but this is, this is.
It's what we saw happen, I think, in one circumstance.
It seems to, okay.
Number of different states.
Chairman on control.
Sorry. You need a, you need a gap.
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Pete.
Well, listen, I, 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 I agree that, that, that I think this, that this policy is comprehensive enough to cover this particular case. It may very well be that we would recommend that the board once again emphasizes to all everybody involved um, this, this policy, just to say, hey, guys, please be aware that, you know, you just attended a, a Brown Act, um, you know, conference. You know, here's an.
A Brown Act seminar.
It's, it's, sorry, cut seminar. Um, and, 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 and by the way, when you make, when you go out onto the, to the, um, internet, you do risk um, violation of, of the Brown Act. So be very, very wise about what it is that you are putting out in, into the public domain. I, for one, stay off of all of it.
Okay, well, that's.
But that's neither here nor there.
So, um, so it's, it sounds to me, it sounds to me like, I'm not going to say the consensus because Vice Chair Heinrich hasn't really said, uh, his opinion. And I don't think Mr. How has quite said his either. Um, but I'm getting the feeling here from three, three of you that perhaps the document that we have right here doesn't need broadening or expanding to cover what we're discussing.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, Ms. Harmon.
Suggestion, and I think it might fix the problem. This happened with me and with somebody else. And maybe what we need to do is write a letter to Ms. Ludwicksen and tell her that the two people that wrote those things have been properly, uh.
Advise.
You haven't, you haven't been punished.
Reminded, yeah. Sure.
That, that, you know, they should not mention anything about C C S D on social media. And I think that that would solve the problem because she's, she said that these people did this, nobody else has any comments, nobody else said any comments. There's nobody else that did. So, so she needs to have a letter. We should give her a letter, say that, you know, Claudia and this other person, I don't even mention my name, you see, that.
Well, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you.
Whatever, admonish, you know, and, and that, you know.
I think we.
Okay, so I'll tell you, I'll tell you what I'm going to do. Um, and so I discussed this particular item with President Dean. And, um, it doesn't appear unless someone wants to make a motion to broaden, somehow broaden the scope of the social media policy. I don't necessarily see that happening. So I'm going to, um, request that, uh, our board president watch this portion of the meeting and, uh, then get back to me and ask her how she feels we should pursue, if, if at all. Yes, Mr. How.
Oh, but, I mean, I don't understand why there's any need to ask a member of the public how uh, we think, how she thinks we should proceed.
No, I, I just said board president.
Given, okay, I thought you were discussing.
No, I said, the board president.
And given, given this.
Mr. How.
Ninety percent of public comments that are made never receive any sort of a response. I don't know what makes this so special.
Uh, I think what makes the, well, I think we've already indicated what makes this particular item of committee members making comments on social media a problem. Yes, Mr. How.
I think, I think maybe as a possible solution to this perceived issue, would we, at the very beginning, uh, a simple sentence to emphasize that who does this policy, does this policy? And it kind of does. You know, it's, it is initially policy address of responsibilities of district employees, district officials.
If you, if you could just indicate where you're reading that from.
Oh, it's the very first paragraph, two four one five point one, per person. And I think, I think maybe the language was, just to emphasize to whom this applies. Because if you were just to read this, it doesn't really serve standing committees, I mean, you have to. So it just, it just put in.
As appointed and elected officials.
Yes.
Yes, I went by the way.
Somehow that.
We are appointed.
You are, no, it does apply, but I, I think it might help if it actually said it.
I don't know.
I think, I think it does, Don, I mean.
I don't think we need to.
District employees and appointed and elected official shall not discuss disclosed information about confidential district business and district social on the district. Personal, yeah, I, 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 I think, I think, I think, I think.
No, it does, it definitely.
Yeah, I think, I think it is.
Not this confidential information, not this public.
I mean, right. I, I don't, I don't know that, that, that this rises to the level of needing to amend the first policy. No. I, I, I mean, I.
I don't think.
I think there, well, maybe, you may be right.
We just.
As much as a policy, uh, maybe.
Let's take a break.
Yeah, I think maybe, uh, Chairman Farmer has the right idea. But I'm, I'm thinking, as I'm seeing it, sometimes it helps to say something twice and that I, I'm not certain that members of these standing committees regard themselves as being under the same restrictions as the board members and stuff.
I think we do.
Well, you, you've been on it for a while now, but, but in terms of what you can say and how you can say it. You know, I'm, I just don't know, but we.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not sure I agree with you, Don. I mean, we all had to attend the, the, you know, the Brown Act, uh, seminar. Um, so. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but, but, but anybody that's, you know, that's on a committee that didn't attend the Brown Act seminar, um, is going to have to make that information, I mean, they're going to have to do something about that because, I mean, we were included in that for a specific reason. And this reason is exactly what's cropping up here.
So.
I think they make a motion.
Uh, if, if, before you make that motion, I just want to make an observation there. And perhaps I just got a little bit lost in the process here. So were you reading from policy two four one five point one? Okay.
And point four.
Pardon me?
And point four, two four one five point four. District employees and appointed and elected officials shall not disclose information about confidential district business on the district's social media sites, personal social media sites or otherwise. Very clear.
So.
I think that's pretty big forward.
I, I, well, it is clear, but I'm not sure this is enough.
Well, and, and so it's.
I, I think everybody.
Hold, hold on, just, just a moment, just a moment. So let me just, district employees and appointed and elected officials shall not disclose information about confidential district business on the district's social media sites, personal social media sites or otherwise. Well, this is confidential, okay? That's very specific. This is not what we're talking about. We're talking about a general comment about something out there that's public information already that's being misrepresented. Am I correct?
Yes, that's what we need to do. I, I, I would, I would challenge the word misrepresented. It was interpreted.
It says confidential.
Right. Right, no, 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 you, 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 you're, you, you said that it wasn't confidential, but it was, it was information that was misrepresented. It wasn't misrepresented, it was interpreted, which any, everybody's entitled to do.
Okay, let me, let me just recite this, okay. Two four one five point four, which is what you folks are discussing here, talks about confidential. What we're talking about here is general information that's being misrepresented. Not something confidential, and therefore.
That's, that's an opinion, Harry, that it's misrepresented, it isn't, I didn't, I didn't find that, that comment to be a misrepresentation at all. It was certainly an interpretation. Uh, but.
Okay, the two examples that were, the two, the two examples that were used. That, that Ms. Ludwicksen, um, highlighted, and then I elaborated upon. Were statements made that weren't factual by committee members. And, and, just, let me finish, and you know what, I'm kind of embarrassing myself here because I'm the committee member, I mean, I'm the chair here.
Right.
Okay, so let me read the beginning here, purpose. The policy outlines the protocol and procedures for use of social media to publicize Cambria Community Services District Services, News, Announcements, Announcements and Events. In addition, this policy addresses the responsibilities of district employees and district officials. As well as consultants and contractors performing work on behalf of the district with regard to social media. And the use of district resources, time, equipment support, as well as responsibilities related to the public records and open meeting laws. So it says district employees and district officials, as well as consultants and contractors. It doesn't say anything about. I guess, were a district, district officials, I guess a board member is a district official. However. It seems to me that committee members. Aren't necessarily included in that statement.
But, but it, it, it does on two four one five point four, it says district employees and appointed and elected officials. Very clear, and then when it talks about complying with the Brown Act, it says social media sites by elected and appointed officials.
Okay, maybe I'm not making my point, and I don't, you know, we're spending way too much time on this, I'm going to.
We're in agreement on that.
I'm going to mention this one more time, but two four one five point four talks about. Unconfidential. That's the diff, that's the diff, that's the word here, confidential, we are not discussing. The, the, we are not discussing the fact. We, we are discussing the fact that something that isn't confidential is being put out in social media by members of committees. Okay, so I think what I'm going to do, because we've spent a lot of time on this, thank you, Mr. Townsend.
Sorry.
That therefore. I'm going to table this item for right now, and I'm going to discuss this with the board president. And if need be, we will bring this back for further discussion.
Good idea.
Yes, Mr. Howell.
Just as, I, because I think what's driving this discussion, if someone's, when we talk to, you know, also. I think really the issue has to maybe work with. The fact that we on this committee or any of our committees are in possession of certain information. And it is assumed by the public that what we say, we have sort of an inside.
Fracture.
Side line.
And so, as we saw, and this is not really a Brown Act issue so much, it's just. Uh, in, in where we might actually want a policy to pull it out in a different way, we do have some responsibility to. The truth, in other words, in, in separating our opinions. As, as Jim pointed out, for example, from, uh, in other words, we, we are obligated by, this is my opinion, but if I were writing a policy. It would, we're obligated by our position. To ta- take a special care that things we say about the district and its operations, that they are in fact truths and not just our opinions. And I think there might be room for some wording, maybe not in this policy, but there, but I think we have a responsibility to, to the public. To present with, with correct information, and so we have to be very careful about. Differentiating what's an opinion when we're, when we're posting versus what's a statement of fact, and I think that was where. Uh, there, the issue was actually coming forth. I, I just.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
This is really a very fruitful thing for, for a whole separate discussion, which is really, what are the responsibilities of? The, the board's fairly clear, you know, they're.
Yeah, they stay off.
But, but what are our responsibilities in terms of being truthful about the operation?
I didn't hear anything in either of those comments that Holly referred to, that could be considered to be untrue.
Okay, so I'll tell you what, we're going to move on.
That's right.
We're going to move on.
May, may, may I, because.
Uh, okay, Mr. Key, I'll let you make one final comment.
Well, I'm just going to say, this is a speedy action item for you.
Pardon me?
The action item I think is, you need to bring this forward to President Dean. And you need to express that, uh, uh, there may very well be. Something that needs to happen to specify the communication of.
That is not, that is not the.
I'll, 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 I'll tell you, I'll tell you what, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I've already stated what I'm going to do as the chair of this committee. And what I'd like to do now is move on to. Item three C under regular business on page thirty five. All right, discuss and consider requesting a needs assessment for policy number four zero zero five. Operating principles of the board norms as per Templeton CSD. So what I'm going to recommend. Is that. We adopt, this is kind of expanding upon, okay, this is operating principles of the board norms. And so this is kind of a combination of code of conduct and that. That's basically what this particular, uh, policy is that's been adopted by the Templeton C C S D. Uh, Templeton C S D, and the reason they did that was because they had a committee member that was somewhat disruptive. At times uncooperative and just made the functioning of the board a little bit more problematic. And so they would be, in the beginning of the meetings, reading this document until. This particular board member. Got the idea that they were kind of violating basically proper protocol. So what President Dean is requesting that we adopt this as a policy. Just to, how can we say it, um.
Is the policy.
Let me, let me, let me just say this, I'm going to read, I'm going to read four zero zero five point four, relationship norms. Create an environment that promotes trust, respect, and appreciation between the board, staff. Committees, consultants, and citizens, that's basically. What we would be hoping to do by adopting this, now. Part of the reason that this is, let's say, a value is because. Um, there were times in the past where we had. Who were not respectful of other board members, we've had board members that weren't respectful of members of the community when they get up and. Made public comment, so what we're doing, thank you for coming back, Hales, we're still here, hopefully not for too much longer. Pardon me?
Do you know how much longer?
I'm hoping ten minutes.
Okay, I have to start another Zoom call, it doesn't allow me to have two Zooms at once.
And that starts when?
I want to get on about four fifty.
And when's it now, four forty?
Four forty.
Four forty.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was going to say until five o'clock.
If not, I could just do.
No, just wondered, right, this hadn't been mentioned earlier.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll do, and you're out there just waiting us, for us to finish, and you can close down the Zoom, is that it? Okay, or clo- close down the recording of the meeting.
Yeah.
All right, we will hopefully, I don't know if we'll wrap this up in ten minutes, we will try to.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry. We have till five o'clock.
We, we, yeah, we did, yeah, yeah.
She doesn't have till five o'clock.
We, we.
Who doesn't have till, Haley does, right, right.
Right.
I'll just go back to the office and create a news link for my meeting, because I, I need to attend the meeting.
At the office, are you, and you're going to be watching this at the same time?
No, I'm not logged in.
So how, okay, so how do I turn this off? I mean, I end the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. So you just click and, right here. And.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, and then just.
And then, and then it'll no longer be recorded.
Correct, and then just shut the door and go.
We'll put up all the chairs and tables, too. Okay, wait about the camera. Thank you, I'm sorry. All right, getting back to this particular agenda item. So basically, uh, and as I said, this is a request of Board President Dean. That we adopt this particular policy. I just gave you the reasons why, and this is basically, and I think part of it is the fact that. We as a board. We have a different board now, one that in my humble opinion is a board of quality and integrity. We also have a new general manager. Who, in my humble opinion, has raised the bar with regard to what we can expect from a general manager. Therefore, we should have, let's say, a policy here that reflects that we as a board, we as a district. Are making an effort to raise that bar as to our conduct. And, uh. That acknowledges that we are becoming, creating an environment that promotes trust, respect, and appreciation between the board, staff. Committees, consultants, and citizens. That's, that's why we're adopting this. And as far as I'm concerned, one might say, well, that's not necessary. But like I say, it raises the bar as to the expectation we have of ourselves. And that the community can have of us as well. Does that make sense what I just said?
Sure.
So what we'd like to do is basically adopt this document. With obviously making some, uh, adjustments where it doesn't say the Templeton Community Services District, but it says the Cambria Community Services District. And also in certain areas here under four zero zero five point three. Where we would include the board shall address, or the board, um. And committees shall address, blah, blah, the board committees and staff, the board committees and staff, and so forth. So other than making these minor adjustments, as I just indicated, um. We would like to adopt this new policy. For our district, operating principles of the board in parentheses, norms and parentheses, policy number four zero zero five. So I'm opening this up for discussion and hopefully, uh, approval. Make a motion for approval.
We're being asked to request a needs assessment.
Right, I'm sorry, to make the needs assessment.
So I'll, I'll move that we request the board authorizes to doing these assessments.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Townsend has, uh. Has made the motion and Ms. Harmon has seconded.
Yeah.
All right, yes, uh, this is Heinrich's.
We get to discuss this at all?
Correct.
Okay, I wasn't sure here, where we were going. One of the comments, it's, both here, it says employees and the elected appointed officials posted.
Where, where are you reading?
From this guidelines.
No, no, no.
Yeah, we're on three C, page thirty five. Yes, I, I thought that was part of that, but. No, 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 that's, yeah, that's completely.
I think I made a moment where you're looking, um, I talked to this, um, Mr. Hirsch, uh, doing the Brown Act, David Hirsch. And I asked him about the context, I didn't know where this is at all the time, but I, I talked to him about context at the board meeting. He said you really can't stop your own people from saying things you shouldn't in public. That's what he told me, so I just wanted to pick that on this, so.
Oh, and so I, I think.
That needs to be put into this document, that, you know, your own board membership not chastising people in public, you know, this. That happens a lot, and, no, not, not a lot, it happens, it happens, it used to happen a lot.
To clarify, so we, I understand the board members cannot chastise, oh, but the chairman can certainly rule over that board.
But that's a discussion to have after we've been authorized to begin the settlement, which is all we're asking for.
That's.
We need to close.
That, that is, we've been asked to approve a needs assessment for this policy, is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, that's the motion. And second.
And second.
Discuss and consider requesting a needs assessment for policy number four zero zero.
Yeah, we have, we haven't said, yes, go forward with this, we're, we're just being, this is the initial step. A board member's asking us, do we need to do a needs assessment, or would we please do a needs assessment for this particular?
The board, the board president has requested.
So, so.
That we consider doing.
Yeah.
Uh, so, so if you're being requested by the board president to do a needs assessment, then we certainly don't have to go to the board and ask permission. This doesn't count as a needs assessment.
Now, this is, this is going the other way. It's coming at us, yeah.
No, it says discuss and consider requesting a needs assessment.
It does say that, but that's, this is what she, he's saying, that she requested.
To the, to the wording agenda, we can't really choose.
Right, so my motion was that we request a needs assessment for policy number four.
Right, right.
So is there a?
Quite a second, and now we can shake a vote on, on, uh, moving forward with the needs assessment, given this information. And then return to the board.
Yeah, um, so if, if we wish to go on to discuss this, um. I, I'd like to feel that in some minor way, I've already kind of indicated, uh. And why we would. Need to, wish to ultimately approve this, and that's to create the environment that I described.
Yeah, would that not be a part of our needs assessment discussion? The intent would be to move it forward if, so we can discuss it. Yeah, so, so I, I think.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm almost, uh.
I would think.
So let.
Everybody's in agreement if we both work. Moving forward. And we can just.
What are you searching for here, Harry?
So, pardon me?
What are you searching for here?
I'm, I'm trying to get some clarity in my own mind here before we move forward, um, so. Hello.
Where's the dinner served, that way?
It's around, around back.
Okay, around back, okay.
Bon appétit. So we're, we're being requested here now that we've had a motion and a second to have further discussion.
Can, can we get clarity on the motion for a minute?
Motion, the motion is. That I move that the policy committee request a need assessment for policy number four zero zero five. Operating principles of the board as per the Templeton C S D. So we're being asked to consider requesting a needs assessment, and my motion is that we. Do actually request that needs assessment, that's been moved and seconded.
And, okay.
Go right ahead.
Just, just add a word or two, to request. A, well, what we really want to do is to do the need.
Do the needs assessment. Yeah, we're not requesting. So we're sorry, been requested. Yeah, it's been requested. It's been requested by the by the president.
Yeah, that's that's kind of what confused me that maybe I didn't necessarily.
Well, I see. Well, we have it on the agenda that we really can't monkey work.
That I didn't necessarily word this, that I could have worded this particular business item a little bit differently.
Well, but that's that's how it's worded. That's what's going out to the public. So that's what we need to do or somewhere.
Right, right. Well, I I don't, I don't, I think if we, I think if we.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, uh. Mr. Key, why don't you go ahead? I know you wanted to make a comment.
I I I think that if we come back, just as Jim and Claudia have suggested. Um, you know. We are basically acknowledging her request and and. Requesting this needs assessment. To the board to come back to us and say, yes, I mean, I suspect my suspicion is that that, you know, the board is gonna is gonna say. Yes, of course, proceed with your needs assessment. So she's she is asking us. You know, she's, I'm sorry, she's requesting.
I think. Why don't you?
No. No, 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 you say it again. That she hasn't been doing anything.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Uh, for decorum.
Sorry.
Um, she is board president Dean.
Okay, yeah, okay, sorry. Board President Dean has come to you with this and saying. Um. Do you as the policy committee agree that a needs assessment should be done on this policy? And we would respond to her and say. For your request for a for our agreement that a needs that a needs assessment needs to be done? No?
No, Jennifer doesn't say anything about the board president.
Let me, I know, hold on, hold on.
Well, let's get clarity.
Hold on.
Get clarity.
Um, I I could be wrong here and excuse me, Mr. Townsend. Um. I have a feeling that I've. Been slightly in error here. Because I believe. That. Ultimately, what President Dean was hoping, and I could be wrong, so once again, I'll ask her to watch this part of the meeting as well. That she was. Asking of us to approve. The policy itself.
Then we should agendize that for the our next meeting.
Exactly, right, yeah, so.
And we can cable this and agendize that for the next meeting.
Yeah, I believe that's what we should do.
Yeah, that's.
And that's fine. I'll like.
Yeah, 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 I'm I'm got good.
The pleasure of the committee, then I'll withdraw.
So thank you.
On my side, I I will.
Yeah, um, yeah, my apologies for the confusion that's been created here.
Okay.
So, um, we're about to wind down. Uh, are there any future agenda items? Yes, Mr. Townsend.
I I I would like to suggest that, um, we, um. We, uh, consider adopting. Specific language regarding the titling of closed session items on board agendas.
Okay.
That they bear some relation to what the board is actually discussing in close session.
And report following.
Close session.
Baby steps, baby steps.
All right, and, uh. And Miss Town and Miss Harmon, you wanted to request what?
Well, yeah, um, we had in our last minutes that we were going to discuss and evaluate the policy handbook. And it did get on the agenda, but I'd like to have that prepared.
Right, I had I had that written down. Discuss and evaluate the C C S D policy handbook and especially prioritize items where there is quote, no policy on record, unquote. And also. Here's another future agenda item. Review email correspondence to the board with regard to. Correspondence addressed to particular board members and their reply. In other words, board members responses.
We did.
To correspondence.
Scrutiny in fact.
Yeah, oh, my gosh.
We, so this is very interesting. I'm glad that it's coming back because it was initially rejected by the board. So now the board is.
Wholesale. Wholesale.
Yeah, and and we've already written it up, so.
Let's review what we had before and.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just think it's an interesting point.
We had a different. All right, I'm all right, um.
You're doing good.
Okay.
Do we have to do a needs assessment on this or be?
That, yeah, that's.
Uh, let me see, there was.
Well, we would review, we would, okay, so.
I just want to say we have like one minute left.
Okay.
So I'd like to adjourn the meeting unless somebody can make a brief comment.
Well, I clarify what this last request is.
I'll get it off the tape without recording.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but could you clarify again the, uh, the board, let me see. Oh, on three C, the motion there was. I kind of lost track of what happened with three C.
We 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 did not take a vote on three C.
So it's table, yes. Uh, just by general consent.
Right, because I need to get back and discuss this with President Dean. And get a little bit more specificity as to what she is ultimately requesting from us.
Yes, I guess I I totally agree. Yeah.
And I'll accept responsibility for the lack of clarity in this.
Just can I make a motion to.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Mine.
I.
Thank you, meaning with her.